You reduce the risk by almost 100% in that area. But they need to understand, and the community needs to understand, what is a closed system where you can manufacture your own chemicals to use? And a closed system that you buy over the counter from a licensed retailer?
Well, I do, I do think that we need to take some of that money and put it towards education for sure. And just my last thing, you mentioned about false statements. And so I think someone at some point mentioned about how menthol is cheaper, you know, versus the flavors. Can you speak to that at all?
I don't, it depends what market is and how it's being sold. Because I will tell you in some places where, like in your state, where you have a very high tax and a pack of menthol cigarettes is very expensive, people are bringing them in from Virginia where you can get a pack for maybe $5. They'll undercut the market share and they'll sell it out of a backpack behind the store. So of course it's going to be cheaper. It's, you know, simple economics. That's, that's true matter there where backpack sales are cheaper. Okay? But, you know, it's not a price differential that the market will set the price lower than everyone else. That's another fallacy.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. I don't see any other questions or comments. So I thank you for your time, Mr. Marino. Thank you for being here with us tonight.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate all your hard work. And you guys hanging tough for 12 hours.
Thank you. This is nothing for this committee. Akilia James. Akilia James, I see you there.
Hello, I'm here.
Great. Thank you so much for being here with us. Go right ahead.
I'm testifying for the 326 on Act prohibiting the sale of flavored cigarettes. My name's Akilia James. I'm a 16-year-old high school student. I'm here to support the ban of flavors for electronic cigarettes. An electronic cigarette is a battery-powered device that heats a liquid nicotine called, a liquid called nicotine, which is extracted from tobacco and inserted in an air saw, which allows the users to inhale and exhale. As you may or may not know, these flavors are made from tobacco companies. And for sales to be high, to be at a high rate, they make enjoyable, attractive flavors, such as gummy bears, frozen lime drops, candy, sour apples, peach, and list goes on. The most harmful and addictive flavor is menthol. And that's because it gives the user a cooling and anesthetic effect. Just by hearing this, you can guess what type of group that maybe attracts the teens. Now, you know how the tobacco companies get people to smoke it, more importantly, young people. But do you know how it affects the body? Well, just by smoking, it can harm the development of the brain, meaning killing the cells and stopping neurons from growing. Your heart and blood pressure can go up, giving your heart harder work to get oxygen to the blood in different parts of your body. Your lungs can be damaged, meaning you can, you may cause asthma, cancer, and chronic or severe pulmonary, pulmonary disease. The visual damage it will cause is irritation to the, to the eyes and black lips, and the list goes on. I support the ban of 326, prohibiting the sale of flavored cigarettes, tobacco products, electronic nicotine delivery systems, and vapor products. Please.
Thank you, Akilia. That was a great testimony. Have you ever testified before?
Um, yeah, I did testify, I think it was last year.
Good. Well, then you're, you're a pro because you're very good at it. Thank you for doing this. And we had a couple other students today over the course of the day. And it's so important to hear from young people, your perspective on this bill and any, any of the bills that you are interested in. So thank you for being here. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? I don't see any, so I'm going to thank you so much for your time. And thanks for being here.
Thanks for having me.
Next up, we have David Sherman. David, you are on mute. I don't know if you realize that.
Should be okay now, right?
Okay, you're good now. Go right ahead.
Good evening. Distinguished Chairman and the awesome Public Health Committee. My name is David Sherman. I'm a UAW worker, local 2121 under Foxwoods. I am the co-chair for the Health and Safety Committee there, and I'm a UAW instructor for the Health and Safety. I teach classes throughout the country. I'm here in regards to Bill 326. I'm here to support, to amend it for no smoking at casinos. In 2006, the Surgeon General reported, concluded that 100% smoke-free workplace policies is the only effective way to eliminate secondhand smoke exposures in the workplace. Even with high technical ventilation system, casino workers are still at high risk for exposure to toxic secondhand smoke. Currently in the United States, 87% of US adults are non-smokers. So that leaves the 13%, which Foxwoods and Mahwegans are catering to, to the population that smoke. Imagine yourself driving home from Hofford, stuck in the rush hour traffic, surrounded by diesel trucks, belling out diesel fumes. The air in casinos has 50 times more cancer-causing particles in the air than that rush hour traffic that you were last in. Secondhand smoke causes various health complications, including lung, heart disease, emphysema, cancer. As a result, workers missing time from work and a company losing productivity at casinos. On the advice of science and the medical community, casinos in this state and nationwide have temporarily eliminated smoking into reduced transmission of COVID-19. Resolving smoke would put workers at risk in contracting future COVID viruses. We've been testing in the last 10 years at Foxwoods. We're testing fine particles and ultrafine particles from sizes of 10 pots per million down to ultrafine is .1. Fine particles affect the upper lung. The ultrafine affect the lower part of the lung, which all these diseases are caused. Now, in conclusion, it is time to protect the rest of the workers. One of the toughest decisions facing lawmakers is trying to make laws which are enforced at casinos. Many times, those working for sovereign nations, who are taxpaying citizens of Connecticut, are the athothor. As a result, workers are subject to work hazards. Now, it is time, and I believe lawmakers, is to protect all workers in the state of Connecticut for by providing a safe, work-free, smoke-free casinos. It is time to stop catering to the minority and representing the majority of making casinos smoke-free. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sherman, for your testimony. Are there any questions or comments from the members of the committee?
I'm sorry, but my, my button to raise my hand has disappeared tonight.
Okay, so go right ahead, Senator Kushner.
I'm not sure when that happened because I had it earlier. But thank you, Senator Dori Abrams. And, and I do want to say, Dave, obviously you and I have worked together for many years, but I have never heard you present as you just did. And it's incredibly impressive to me because I know you from 10 years ago when you just started down this path and the amount of information that you have, that you commanded and the amount of work that you've done on behalf of the Foxwoods workers is so impressive to me. This has been a long time coming, and I know you do a lot of testing. And I wondered, I, I know you're very involved, not just at the casino, but in other casinos. And I wondered if you could talk a little bit about the kind of testing that you do do. There was a question that came up earlier, for instance, that the air outside of the casino is dirtier than the air inside the casino. A comment was made that, and I wondered if you could address that. And, and, you know, I, I was speculating that perhaps, you know, there are, there are contaminants in the outside air that you don't find inside the casino. But, but maybe these ultrafine and fine particulates wouldn't be found outside the casino as they are inside the casino where they're smoking. I wonder if you could talk about that a little?
The EPA has, has founded that nine pots per pot per million is safe. Okay? In the casinos, we are testing, we test 12 different, we do our mapping. We have 10 different areas. Our highest mapping area, which shows up on our tests for the last 10 years, is 248 pots per million. So basically, the outside air, if you tested it, yes, it could be safer. Like I mentioned earlier, secondhand smoke is very hard to get out of a casino. It's very hard to filter it. Yes, we've upgraded the systems to MERV 14s, which have another filter in front of it, which is a MERV 10. So the air is going through a 30, you know, 34 MERV filtering system. But still, our tests are still showing the data that is too high. And we have many hundreds of dealers throughout the years have been coming down with diseases and asthma and all complications of lung and heart disease. And many of these employees, because of their medical leave runs out and ends up under the state to support their healthcare. That's where the serious expense will come in to the state.
I have another question. I, I wondered, I know that you've been involved in the testing. Have you also, are there any professional companies that are working with you on this testing? Or is it done, how is it done? And who does it?
Yes, the, the company that we have testing is the Environmental Health and Engineering, Inc. They do our testing for us. It's also, we have evaluations done in, on the data by Professor Frank Meyer. He's been working on our data. I have not seen his conclusions yet on our 10 years of data we have now.
And I know that at some point during the last 10 years, there was a negotiation that resulted in a smoking pit, a non-smoking pit. And so there's been a suggestion, if you have non-smoking areas, like a pit, where you can go work as a dealer. If you have a respiratory issue, if you are vulnerable or more vulnerable, you have that option of working in another pit. I know that there's been some language about that at Foxwoods. I don't know about Mahogan Sun. I know the comment was made that Mahogan Sun, anyone can choose to go work in a non-smoking area. Do you know about either Mahogan Sun or at Foxwoods? What are the opportunities to work in non-smoking areas?
Okay. In the non-smoking pits at both casinos, dealers have the work to go into them. But the problem with that is that casinos have an open plan, plan. Just like you have your house, which is, you know, the living room's open to the dining room, the dining room's open to the living room. So all these casinos are open. Even in our testing, our testing has shown, even in the smoking area, which all poker rooms in the country are non-smoking. But in our poker room, we've had test results come up as high as 80 pots per million because the particles move in the air. And EPA, like I mentioned before, is nine.
And I do remember that, that poker room was quite segregated from the rest of the casino in many ways, as you're saying.
Yeah, it's on a separate floor, but it's open. The staircase is open, so the particles do move. Yes, every, every casino room is on a different HVAC unit, which it pulls the air out. But the tests have, the data has shown that particles move. So it's not 100% smoke-free.
Right.
And could I just add that two, the two non-smoking rooms at Mahegans and Foxwoods, they're small. So there's already a small amount of dealers can actually opt to work in that room. You know, maybe less than 20%. So you have 80% that have no choice whatsoever for working in a smoke environment.
You mentioned that hundreds of people have, over the years, have experienced respiratory disease and, and you've had quite a number of deaths. You know, I, I, you know, part of my passion for this is knowing some of the people who died from lung cancer that I knew. You know, I always think about them. And, and I wondered, you know, what's the impact on the employees to know you're in an environment where you've seen so much death by your coworkers? From your, you know, so many of your coworkers have died.
Many deals have to deal with it. I mean, we're trying to look into stress training. The effects is, is immense. It's even us to get cancer insurance, we have to pay for it ourselves. The companies are not paying for that. And it's, the hottest thing that started me off was I had a gentleman that I was contacting when we were first organizing, and I was wondering why he wasn't coming to meetings. And I called him, he says, I have cancer. I have stage four. He died two weeks after our election. And I had asked him before he died, I says, you know, because he had mentioned one of the cancers he had. I says, did you smoke? He says, no.
Yeah. Well, the other thing I know, I heard from dealers was that it was very hard for them. Dealers who were smokers found it impossible to stop because they were surrounded by smoke all day long. And I know several who tried to stop while we were organizing. And I know one of those women died from lung cancer. I, I think she did try and stop, but I, I don't, it might have been too late. There's also a lot of evidence, I remember, that if you stop smoking and you continue to work around secondhand smoke, that you are still very vulnerable to lung cancer, even if you stopped. So. Well, is there anything else you'd like to share? I think you froze, Dave.
I think you may have frozen. I think you froze. So, well, thank you, Senator. If he comes back on, we'll have him come back and answer. You're on mute now, Mr. Sherman, in case you don't know that. But, and you may have frozen. Okay, we'll go back to him if he comes back and has more to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Hey, I'm back. Sorry.
Oh, good. Was there anything else you wanted to add? Senator Kushner was asking.
I missed her last question because my screen went blank.
Yeah, she was just saying, was there anything else you would like to add?
Yes, the stress of the workers is immense, working in a smoke environment. A lot of them have trouble finding the direct healthcare to deal with their problems. And we've had numerous amount of workers that had to leave because they had COPD, et cetera, with all the side effects of secondhand smoke. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Dave, thank, thank you for fighting this fight. And thank you, Senator Dori Abrams, for allowing me this opportunity to, to speak with this strong advocate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sherman, for your time tonight and for your testimony.
You're welcome.
Next is Anthony Bonito. Mr. Bonito, I see you there. You want to take yourself off mute? Thank you.
Hello, how are you?
Good, thank you. How are you?
Excellent. I'd like to, I'd like to thank the committee for waiting 12 and a half hours to speak to me. My name is Tony Bonito. I am here to speak against Senate Bill 326. I am self-employed and I own and operate two gas stations in South Windsor, Connecticut, and one in Bolton, Connecticut. I've owned them for 28 years. I have, I have 23 full-time employees. As a side note, I have coached high school football for the last 40 years and am currently the head football coach at Prince Tech in Hartford. I am 100% against minors buying and using tobacco or vapor products and advise my players on a daily basis on dangers of tobacco, vaping, alcohol, marijuana, and other illegal drugs. As a small business owner, my employees and I work very hard to make sure we make every effort not to sell tobacco and vaping products to minors. Menthol and flavor products account for approximately 25% of my store sales. A loss of over 25% of my sales would have a devastating effect on my business. The menthol and flavor ban has had a very negative effect on my colleagues who have stores in Massachusetts. Their businesses are down significantly, and the black market for menthol and flavor, and flavor products has grown exponentially. Obviously, no one is checking IDs on the black market. Many of the gas stations in Connecticut are run by a class of business who are commissioned agents. These agents make virtually nothing on gasoline. If the menthol flavor ban is instituted, their store, their store sales would be cut by approximately 40% and their businesses will be destroyed. I understand that Senate Bill 326 is a well-intentioned bill. But most of tobacco products purchased by minors in Connecticut are not purchased in our stores. They're obtained in ways that have nothing to do with local Connecticut businesses. Making them is illegal to, to sell to adults will have little to no effect on consumption. A side note, a Newport buyer is not going to start smoking Marlboro Reds. Just because someone has decided that Newports are illegal, a Newport buyer or smoker will certainly find Newports. And that goes with any other brand. They're not going to switch. They'll go find them somewhere. The unintended consequences of this bill are enormous. There is no evidence that tobacco use will go down. There is evidence that there will be a significant loss of revenue to local small businesses, many of which are owned by people of color. Last but not least, there will be far fewer tax dollars to the state budget. I believe the state should focus on educating our students about the dangers of cigarettes, vaping, alcohol, and marijuana and other illegal drugs, just like I do with my players every day. I think every parent, every teacher, every coach needs to talk about young people about these dangers on a daily basis. Thank you. Hope I was well under three minutes to answer any questions you might have.
I think you may have been under three minutes. Excellent job. Appreciate this, this hour, but good testimony as well. Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from the members of the committee? Seeing none, I'm going to thank you so much for your time. Thank you for being a football coach. I was a high school teacher and administrator, and you guys do a great job. So, thanks for that.
My pleasure to present this evening and thank all of you for all of your help.
Thank you. Next, we have William Skid. Mr. Skid, are you on? Mr. Skid? I don't see you there. So we'll move to Mr. Mukhtar Ahmad.
Hello, good evening, member of Public Health Committee. My name is Mukhtar Ahmed, and I own the retail stores. And I'm speaking in the position of this 326. I heard a lot of things and a lot of great retailers come up and they show their concerns. And the biggest concern is, as I heard the Mr. Chairman said, there is no criminal penalties on the buyer or whoever have a menthol or any other stuff. My point is, what about if somebody in front of my store is selling or behind my store is selling? What going to happen with this guy? Who going to take this territory in Hartford, Bridgeport, the great cities, where nobody willing to go there and impose the law and order? So how are we going to fight with them? And how they going to control these people when it's definitely going to create a black market? Everybody know that. You don't have to be rocket scientist. When you ban the things in free market economy and the society demand this stuff, it's going to come from, no matter what. It's going to come from around the other states. I know personally, a friend of mine, my, my customer, when I ask him, why you not buying the cigarette? He told me, we are working in the factory, we pulling, we, some of us went to New Hampshire to see his parents, his mother, his father, whatever. And the boy from 20 carton from there, and we chipping each other. We don't need this $120 carton in Connecticut. They want to buy for their $60. So how the people, if there is a will, there is a way. If the people, you ban them, you skyrocketing the taxes in state. So they're going to find the way, no matter what. So basically, this is very bad for our retailer stores, for our community. The community, they're showing, the, some of legislators showing pain for the, some of the community. They don't know how much they're going to suffer when they don't have a transportation, they don't have anything, and they don't, they cannot find their stuff around their neighborhood. So that's my concern is, when you ban something, you create more problems. You're not solving the problem. And the other thing, we never sell underage kids. If they are getting something, underage kids, so that means they are getting from outside. They are not getting from our establishment. So even you ban it, they already getting from illegal partners. So they keep getting it. This doesn't make any sense to ban these things because you have to raise your administration, your security, rule of law. Otherwise, these things keep happening, no matter if you ban it. But they're going to still, still get it because they are not getting from established. Another thing, I, listening from respected member, he say, we're going to check, we're going to send our state people to the license establishment. So that means you punishing us because we have a license. And whatever is selling outside without license, they're going to reward it. So they're going to make more business. They don't need a license from state. They can sell it, as we know, in Hartford, in Bridgeport, Waterbury, people have no license. State have a record of the license. You follow the law and they go there, their inspector went there, they check everything. They, they should check it. We have no.
Sorry, excuse me, you hit your three-minute mark. If you could conclude your remarks.
I concluded my things and I would respect, I request my Health Committee members, please, whenever you consider this issue, consider the consequences of this ban. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Just one minute, Mr. Ahmad. Let's see if anyone has any questions or comments from the members of the committee.
Sure, I'm happy to.
Seeing none, thank you so much. Thank you for your testimony and thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you very much.
Next is George Taylor. Mr. Taylor? Mr. Taylor, I see you there. I don't know if you can take yourself off mute and on video?
Okay, there we go.
Okay, great. Thank you for being here. Go right ahead.
Good evening, co-chairs Steinberg and Abrams and members of the Public Health Committee. Thank you for giving me this time to address this issue. I am in support of HB 326, but as my coworker before me in amending it to eliminate the restrictions of the smoking restrictions in the casinos. My name is George Taylor. As, and I've been a dealer at Foxwoods Resort Casino for over 26 years. I've been involved with the UAW from the beginning of our organizing, and I've participated in all of our contract negotiations. I've had several conversations over those years with many of representatives of our state, including attorney generals, as far back as our Senator Blumenthal, who early in our campaigning said that, you know, we'll look back at this 20 years from now and say, what took us so long? Well, we're more than halfway to that 20 years. And while we've made some small improvements in the ventilation systems, as you've already heard, and established some no-smoking areas off the gaming floor, the state legislature's failed us. Since enacting the Smoke-Free Workplace Act, we at the casino have been left behind. Bars and restaurants complained they would lose business, but that just wasn't true. They have survived, and those claims have been proven false. The casinos were given an exception that affected the highest number of workers and patrons in the most confined and restricted spaces. That exception needs to end. It's well past the time to protect all the workers in Connecticut. We've been continuously sacrificed under the specter of lessened revenue out of fear that the smoking policies would affect the bottom, bottom line negatively. Those fallacies have never been proven. In fact, Those fallacies have never been proven. In fact, in many states, those same fallacies have been debunked. Nearly half of all states that allow casino gambling are completely smoke-free, including Maine and Massachusetts. And more than half of those, I mean, more than half of the are smoke-free or have a designated smoking area away from the gaming floor. It's quite pathetic and disgusting that it's taken a worldwide pandemic for us to finally be able to work in a smoke-free environment, albeit temporarily. As I continuously hear announced over the PA at work, it is far past time to make it permanent. Even national tribal leaders are pushing for this to happen in tribal casinos in a radio webinar series called "The Tribal Support for Smoke-Free Air." Over the past eight-plus months, working in a smokeless environment, I've noticed improvements in my personal health. Secondhand smoke is a deadly contagion that cannot be effectively controlled or ventilated out, and it needs to be eliminated. There are an infinite number of facts and studies behind this, as you've already heard my colleague Dave attest to. Thank you for allowing me to address you on this very important topic and I'm here to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions or comments? Senator Kushner?
Well, George, I think you're one of the last speakers tonight. It's been a long day and you're correct. Dave did a great job of laying out sort of the, some of the science that he has learned in being a health and safety advocate in the casino. I know you participated in negotiations. I wonder if you could address some of the, you know, what it's like to work in a place where you know your health is being threatened by the conditions you're working in and where you've seen so many of your colleagues pass away.
Well, I could speak to it in a couple different respects. One is a next smoker. I smoked for 20-plus years, including my time in the United States Navy riding submarines before the Navy was smoke-free as it is now. We were, back then, we were small, close group, confined area. It had a tremendous effect on my health and it took a long time for me to quit. And it was very difficult trying to quit in the casino. Because you're around, you've got no choice. But when I did quit, we didn't have the smoke-free area that we, the limited smoking pit, non-smoking pit, I should say, that we have now. So that just amplifies how difficult it is for anybody who wants to, you know, try to break themselves from it and lead a healthier, more productive life. It's that much more difficult. I've seen many, many coworkers, you know, either pass away or have their conditions worsen to the point that even being in the smoke-free areas, they couldn't work there anymore. They had to leave. And it wasn't because they couldn't do the job, it's because they couldn't survive and do the job. One of our, one of our longtime poker dealers passed away years ago. He never smoked. But he worked at the casino. Never smoked a day in his life. And he passed away from lung cancer. And it's not the same person Dave was talking about, because I know who that is, somebody else. So for each person that's in there, we individually probably know somebody else that a fellow coworker doesn't even know that has had the same issues.
Well, I want to thank you for being here tonight and talking about this issue and just to all of the dealers at Foxwoods who I have stood with for all these years. Tonight, I'm thinking of Bonnie Forman, who died from lung cancer. She's one of the organizers and, you know, it was very painful for all of us to lose her, as well as all the others.
Bargained with us, so, yeah.
So we're thinking of her and I hope that this will be the year that we actually do something about the smoking conditions in the casinos. So thank you for testifying and thank you, Senator Dory Abrams, for allowing me this opportunity to ask these questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Kushner. And thank you, Mr. Taylor, very much for your testimony. It's really important that we hear your perspective. So thank you for being with us tonight and.
Thank you for allowing me the time. I appreciate it.
I wish you all the best.
Thanks.
Next, we have William Skid. Mr. Skid, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you. And thank you, senators and representatives. Kudos on your endurance. Very long day. Just super quickly, I am in opposition to SB 327. I heard the testimony of many of the others. Just to clarify again, I don't think I need to go into it, but I do firmly believe that a small subset of corporate funeral homes was for the passage of the food and beverage and that that was, the hearings were not communicated to the rest of us. And I don't think that was entirely accidental. The, but that is not material to what the bill is about. First of all, I wanted to sort of describe that funerals are amorphous. They're fluid, they're crowded, they're emotional and interactive. They're hard to control. We've just, at this point, sort of gotten to pretty much normalizing people wearing masks and distancing, mostly. I still see very often people all hugging and embracing at the end because they just have to say goodbye or just have to say hello. I think that more than anything right now, introducing a bill, I realize that Connecticut's last in introducing this bill, but right now, in the middle of a pandemic, just seems reckless. All it would take is one super-spreader event to be a huge black eye for all of us, especially our industry. And I don't think it would take much. It sometimes feels like we're flirting with that anyway, just trying to keep the numbers down on wakes and visitations. I also wanted to clarify one thing, that most funeral home events are not all day. It's very rare to have probably low single digits to have a wake that's over four hours. And I would say maybe 1% these days are doing multiple days of wakes. So it's not super onerous on the people. I could see exploring this, but really, all I'm trying to say is, I strongly encourage you to maybe table it for a year until we have a grasp on COVID and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Are there any questions or comments from the members of the committee? Seeing none, thank you so much, Mr. Skid, for your testimony this evening, or tonight, I should say. No longer evening.
Good night, thank you.
I think there are a couple people who are maybe on phone lines that the our incredible staff are going to try to see if they have been waiting to speak. And so in the meantime, I just want to thank all of the committee members for your incredible work today, as always. I'm always so impressed with everyone on this committee and your commitment to doing what we can to make the public health of the state of Connecticut the best it can be. So we might not always agree, we might not always see things the same way, but never, ever question the intent of this group. So thank you so much for being here for.
Senator, let me add my words.
Over 12 hours. Excuse me, Representative?
I just wanted to add my words of thanks and kudos to everybody who participated today. I think this is a really good warm-up for the other bills we have this session. So thank you all.
And lastly, I just want to thank our incredible staff that you, they have done such a great job in figuring this out and everyone's patience is greatly appreciated. So we'll just keep getting better at it. That's all. So thank you all for being here and have a great rest of your night.
We have a waiting room, please.
What?
There is a person.
In the waiting room.
There is someone?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, do you have the name? Do we have the person's name? Said, if you're, Said, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak.
Yeah, good evening, members of the committee. I'm here to oppose the Bill 326. I mean, we own a couple of stores here in the state of Connecticut, along with the tobacco shops in East Hartford. I mean, the reason why I'm opposing this bill is that we are the front line of the tobacco. We are the one who check the IDs and looks youth in the eye when they are trying to make an illegal purchase. Nobody else but retailers. We are the gatekeepers. Our legal system exists to sell these products through, but so does an illegal system that operates underground and is unregulated. Banning flavor just shifts the product from one market to the another. It doesn't stop anyone from using them. It just changes where they buy it. Customers will still buy from New Hampshire, Pennsylvania, and online. All the same use, but none of the tax revenue. State loses, retailer lose. How this is a public health win? I've been hearing since morning, a couple of the people came in and they said, especially when there was a criminalized question, the chairman said that the buyers will not be criminalized, the sellers will be criminalized. My question is that if somebody is selling outside my place and law enforcement agency tries to get hold of him, he still can say he's using it for personal use, but because he will not be criminalized. The other thing is that we, I'm hearing since morning, this Lucy thing. Lucy is in existence for the last 20 years in our state. The law enforcement agency has not been able to stop the sale of loose cigarettes as of today. I just closed a store in Bridgeport just because of the fact that when I was trying to sell them at the regular price, he just go across the street and say they don't charge any tax and the product is $7 or $8 because it doesn't have a stamp, it's being sold as a loose thing. There's no enforcement. The stock product still comes from the out-of-state. Nothing will happen. So if we will ban these products, the customers will move on to this unregulated places or the sellers from where they can buy. Not only these bans, there's a product known as a whipped cream, which is being used in the bakery, but now it's being sold in all of our stores and are being sold to the people who gets high because of that. There is no restriction that 19 years are going to buy or 21 years is going to buy. Everybody can buy that product. So basically banning these things, the menthol thing, instead of getting low on these things, people will get high on the drugs, on the marijuana, on the THC, which the state has legalized that you can sell them. So my question, my suggestion is if you're going to ban it, the drugs will go much higher in the state. We lose the revenue and then on the top of it. I mean, anybody can sell it out the street. Like I heard a lady saying that her son got introduced to it at the age of 13 years. My question is, who was funding that kid from 13 years to 20 years? He is 20 now and she said he started at 13. So we are talking something back in 2013. So when he was using it, the mother then knew that the drug is coming on the house, the parents were funding that kid. Did she ever reported to the law enforcement agency that this shopkeeper is selling? He should be barred? His license should be canceled? Nothing on that record.
You hit the three-minute mark. If you wouldn't mind concluding your remarks.
I just want to say that just give it a considerate thought on this thing. Banning will not help this state. It will increase the use of this thing in the young kids much more because then they will be restrained on the legal side that the shopkeeper can't sell it to them. They'll buy it from the black market and this bill will encourage the black market. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it. You are our last speaker for the evening, so thank you for that testimony. And again, thank you so much to the members of this committee. You are an incredible group of people and I feel fortunate to serve with all of you. And thank you ever so much to Beverly Henry and her staff for doing such a great job. So after we've gone through this, if any of you have any feedback you want to share with Representative Steinberg or I, you know, feel free on how the process went or any suggestions you might have. We just want to make this as good as it can be.
But not tonight.
But not tonight. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night. Night. Be careful driving.